President.
May I?
President.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Chris.
President.
Mayor Chairman Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight, the invocation is John Metters, the Christian Life Assembly. Hi, John.
Let's stand and pray. Let's pray. Lord Jesus, thank you so much for this past week and when we celebrated you coming to this earth and dying on a cross for our sins and coming back to life the third day. I love your words that you gave us for God, your Father, so loved us that he gave you his only begotten son, that whoever believes in you should not perish but have everlasting life. Lord, let that truth and let the love that you have for us sink down in our hearts. Tonight, as the city council decides issues, I pray that you would guide them, give them wisdom, bless them, bless their families, bless our city, Lord, protect our city, protect all those who serve us so well, be with our schools, Lord God. Father, encourage our teachers and administrators. Father, we give this to you in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you, Chuck. Okay, do you want to get through?
Sure. If everybody would stand. Place the flag, put your right hand over your heart, and repeat with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you want to help me with the presentations? Tell me what I'm doing. Doesn't that just pull out a lot of confidence in you that the mayor says, tell me what I'm doing?
Yeah. Well, Mary, we have a couple of recognitions today. One of them is the sports team, which you can see behind us. They're going to be second. But our first one is going to be Riley Smith. And if they can come up with Riley Smith and her group. Come on out. She was the 2022 LA County Mock Trial Competition and Best Witness Performance.
Really?
So.
Wow.
Yeah. So, congratulations to her.
I used to teach mock trial. That is really, really hard. You must have worked really hard. Congratulations.
So because she's so smart, we're going to have to say a couple of words and be a witness to you guys right now and tell us what you did.
For mock trial, I memorized what I need to say as the victim in the court case mock trial, fully shared as I portrayed. And I needed to memorize and act out what I need to say in a real court case.
Did you enjoy the experience?
Yes, I did.
Are you going to be a lawyer?
Thinking about it.
You're thinking about it? Would it help if I gave you a $1,000 scholarship? Okay, I want you to think about it harder. But yeah, you can have the scholarship, okay? You worked really hard. I know how hard that is. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ron.
One, two, three. Thank you.
The next group we have is the Quartz Hill Soccer Team. Yeah, you should probably come back down. Is the Quartz Hill Soccer Team. They are the Division III CIF Champions. So give them a round of applause. I'm going to ask our coach to come up and tell you about the season and about the athletes. But the note that I heard on them was they had an away game for their championship and they had 1,000 people in the stands at an away game. So they broke records in attendance and support from the community and just did an amazing job from what I understand. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to their coach and have him come tell you a little story about their program.
Mr. Clottle. Can we send Raj down there because he's a graduate of Quartz Hill High School?
You better come down.
Please do. Just real quick, without taking too much time, these boys worked hard all season and they've, they went farther than any team in the school's history, going into the regional playoffs as well. And it was true, we had, it was a home game actually for our final, but we played at AVC because the weather was horrible and the field had gotten torn up at Quartz Hill. So, but they, they rose to the occasion and, and played like men. So these boys are, I'm proud of what they did and I'm sure they are for themselves as well. Give them a, give them a hand.
Thirteen.
You see my dilemma?
Well, we'll leave it to the coach to hand out the certificates, but if you guys could all come up and take a picture, that'd be great.
And the team can pick the scholarship. Do it that way?
Yeah. Sounds good. All right. Up here?
Come up over here. Thank you. Everybody. All right, one, two, three. And then just another, one, two, three. If we have families, we want to take photos.
Who broke his arm, maybe?
Hold on. Everyone good? Just one stand right here, just we were missing a member. There we go. Sorry, excuse me. Just another one, sorry about that. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you, Marvin. That's when you need for your flyers, next time you run.
You already think about it.
This is when you think about it. When there's no stress, there's no, you want to bring in all the West Side.
Yeah. That's it.
Which is what? Yeah. Not doing it. That was fun. Thank you. Yeah, she's really young, yeah. They, they work really hard on that. Okay, we'll hear the staff report regarding ED1 from Andrew Noga.
Actually, it'll be me, sir, again.
Where's Andrew?
You're seeing a lot of me. He had a family obligation tonight. But the, I am excited, honored, and thrilled to make a recommendation to you to approve or adopt Resolution 2321 proclaiming the termination of a local emergency caused by a health emergency caused by COVID-19. So big round of applause to you guys as leaders, the community, the staff, everything else. As you guys know, it was a pretty rough three years here at City Hall and in the community, the nation, and our state. Just a short recap of what you and your staff and your community accomplished. It started with the operation of the EOC, where the first time we opened the EOC since I've been here in 14, 15 years, to the level of the emergency we had, we had a full operational EOC in an effort to gain food resources, shelter resources, and many other things for this community that needed, from health services to masks, to vaccines, to test kits, to go down the laundry list of things that are EOC. And I want to give a shout out to Andrew Noga, John Falcons, and our public safety team who's listening that, who started that program and just did an amazing job. They also had a large, large team behind them. If you recall, we had the fairgrounds set up, a shelter in place for a couple hundred people, because we didn't know what we were going to expect. If you remember, when it first started happening, we didn't know what we were going to get. That shelter eventually turned into a vaccine center where we had fought tooth and nail to get the vaccine. And Kaiser stepped up initially to be the first ones to do, to help us with that in conjunction with LA County. We did food service programs. We did giveaways with AVTA. We did the fare services with testing. We tested, this is interesting, number 23,000 people. We gave 100,000 vaccines at the fair site. We look at the amount of tons of food given away. We worked on an auto mall program, which helped prop up the auto mall. As you remember, the supply chains were issues. We did some giveaways to the public for them to incentivize them buying cars. We did a takeout and chill program to support our restaurants. Go down the list of things you did from an economic perspective, from a health perspective, all for the purpose of trying to regain what we do in emergencies, regain order in our community. And today, I think we can say proudly that we did that far better than many other cities. I know we have our doctors here today who served a very, very important role. I'm sure they have a couple of words to say, and of course, you guys do too. But I just want to, as a, as your city manager, on behalf of our, our staff, I don't want to say it was fun. I think in hindsight, it was difficult, but it was an experience that I think none of us would have ever had and many other cities didn't enjoy of having leadership like you guys able to support us and accomplish the goals that we wanted to accomplish. So I want to thank you for that as your city manager. But with that, I'll turn it over to the doctors to have a few words.
Thank you, Jason. I just want to say, this has been, this three-year period has been among my 30 years in being a emergency medicine physician, among my proudest moments to work with you folks, the entire city and the community in getting through this together. I think we did an outstanding job. And, you know, we could have far, far worse than we did. And it was, it was a huge bringing together, not just of healthcare, obviously. There was a lot of things that had to go on, economics, livelihoods, food, shelter, and a lot of other things. And I just want to say, it's not just, obviously, the doctors that are, and nurses and healthcare people save lives, you guys help save lives. So Jonathan and I would like to honor you as representatives of the whole city with, with something we want to give you tonight. We have these lapel pins, which have the Star of Life on them, which represent the Emergency Medical Services in the United States of America. It has the Rod of Escholapius, who's the god of healing and medicine on it. And we just wanted to have it as a symbol of our gratitude for your leadership during this great pandemic. So I want to bring that to you folks. You want to give that to them.
Now, this doesn't give you the authority to take a look. You guys still are not doctors.
I've been 25 years in infectious disease. This was like, so among the worst situations I've been in. I was at the beginning of the HIV epidemic. We went through AIDS, we went through, I thought that was bad, but this was among the worst. And working with, with you, with the team, with the city council, made a big difference. One very key event was in January of 2022, when we were, we were basically just swamped and there was no beds left and running low on oxygen, running low on supplies. And then the tent came in. The tent basically took 70-plus cases a day out of the acute hospital and allowed us to do, take care of the sickest of the sickest. The milder patients went to the tent. And that, to me, really made it, made it a key moment in this fight. And I appreciate your leadership and all, the way that you made it possible. Thank you.
Your relationship in arranging Samaritan's Purse to come out here that winter to assist us was quite amazing. I didn't think I'd see a day when a non-governmental organization would need to come in, come to the rescue, and they did. And they really, I think, for that period of time when they were here, they helped keep the hospital functioning. And it's because of, because of you folks that happened.
Thank you.
And we have a short video. And of course, the, it couldn't have happened without our nonprofits, with the church community, with the staff, with the leadership, your leadership, everybody coming together to solve these problems. So it is an honor to present kind of the closing video. It's a short video just to commemorate the emergency. And as we continue to get on, I do want to make one note for the city staff who was out there and for all essential workers. The roads were still getting paved, the lawns were still getting mowed, you know, food was still getting served. You go down the laundry list of things that we still had to do as your city staff, and I commend our staff for that during this emergency and our community for being patient with us through this process. So with that, I'll play the video. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or you guys can share your individual stories as well. So with that, we'll play the video.
Good afternoon. I'm in the EOC. That's the Emergency Operations Center for the city. Give you an indication of just how seriously we're taking this. This will be manned every day, two shifts.
These are trying times right now, but we will get through this.
I wish I had great news to give everybody, but the truth of it is, I don't. Where I am now is I'm at the fairgrounds at a field hospital we have established with the Salvation Army. Hector Acosta is from the Salvation Army, has been working three days on putting this together for us.
Our role here is logistically by providing supplies, hygiene kits, cots, and that sort of thing. We are also going to be supporting through emotional and spiritual support, which is something that people don't think about during these times, but it's a big need.
Currently, we have a total of 1051 positive cases with 19 deaths in Lancaster.
Two, one, light the tree. There we go. Merry Christmas.
I want, Rex, can I say something? I want to appreciate you, man. Nobody, I came into office in 2020 and it changed this whole nation fabric, changed from how we have worship. And for you to make sure that we had every life available, saving means to be in this valley, and you was willing to fight, and being a council member willing to stand with you on that, and having these superb doctors, it just meant a lot. And whatever people fought, thought about the taking a vaccine, the, the bottom line was, it was available if you wanted it. You made sure that we didn't lack anything. And I want to say from the bottom of my heart, I really appreciated that because I had two mothers, if doctors remember, both my mother and my mother-in-law had life-saving emergency surgery during COVID. And as a pastor, I had to bury people and couldn't even go to the, we were doing it on Zoom, burying people. I was literally, I couldn't commit bodies. They were taking the caskets with tow trucks and, and, and other vehicles over, and we couldn't even go to commit the body the proper way. So COVID changed our life, but leaders are made. And they say they born, but I think we were made stronger as a council. We were made stronger as a community. And I want to say personally, through all our ups and downs, I am very proud to have served as council and have you as a leader that could care less what people were saying, but you made sure that everybody in this community of almost 200,000 people had everything that they needed. And I want to personally say I thank you for that. I do.
First of all, I'd like to thank the doctors for giving us the up-to-date information about what to do and how to do it, because we leaned on you to give us that information. And that was very, very important to us. But for everybody that is out there to look at the auxiliary facilities that we used.
Yes.
The fairgrounds, jet hocks, other communities didn't have these facilities to lean on and to use. And over 100,000 people went through the fairgrounds. It's, we need those auxiliary facilities for these emergencies when they do happen. And that's one of the big things that I'll be pushing. So thank the doctors. Thank you, and Rex. I echo what Daryl said in regards to you and Pastor Paul at Lancaster Baptist Church for bringing Samaritan's Purse here. And we really need to do something to solidify our thanks for them.
This is, I think the doctor said it best when there was that tipping point. And if it wasn't for what you did, along with Pastor Paul with Samaritan's Purse, I think that was significant. And hearing it from the two experts, and I felt a lot more confident as a leader, listening to the doctors and getting that update, because people would ask you questions, and I felt more confident about, too much controversy in the news media, way, way too much. And I, I really felt good. Thank you, doctors.
I just wanted to say, this was pretty tough. It was very tough for everybody as a community and as our leadership. Everybody came through like, you know, so strong and was there for each other, and our hospital and doctors and you guys. Even I would say Dr. Trung, he will, he was always in a good spirit. He will still crack a joke even through that. So I honestly, I'm not going to go deep in jokes, but he was, honestly, he was in a great spirit. So I just want to thank you. Thank you, and thank you, Mayor Paris, for great leadership. So.
Before the mayor says something, I, I just want to say regarding our community and you guys as the leaders, I spent 25 years doing these sort of emergencies overseas in other countries and seeing how they did things and, and being amazed how countries come together or communities come together when it needs to. And I, I live in a community that didn't do a tenth as well as this community did. I was embarrassed about how that community handled it. This community performed at such a superlative level, because of what you're saying, only part of it was the, was the information was out there that we could deliver, and I hope we delivered it effectively. I think we did. But it's what you guys did, what Marvin was just saying, it was all that other stuff that went on when it was the right time and the political pressure was brought to bear to get us the resources to execute on that, that it was the resilience, just what it said in that, in that montage there that he put together. And this community was resilient, and you guys led that resilience.
I remember when William died, he was the first person in Lancaster who died of COVID. And I remember the, the opposition that we, we suffered from the county and, and from the state. I mean, it was endless. But most of all, I remember what you said very early into the pandemic. You said, "We're going to get through this eventually, and we're going to look back and we're going to see and remember how well we performed in a crisis." Whether we stood up for the community and did something to help, or whether we were one of those people who just criticized and complained. And, I mean, they seemed to have been everywhere on social media. It was like, we couldn't do anything right, remember? I mean, and it was such over, I mean, I remember being on a phone call with all the mayors in public health from LA County. And it was very apparent that I had more information from you guys than they had, that they were as lost as we were. They were, they were really lost, you know? Very early into it, whether or not we should require people to wear masks. I mean, how absurd. Is our city attorney still wearing her mask? The, the, but the thing I was most proud about was the way the community came together. It was, I'll never experience that again. And, I mean, you got, you got to understand what, it's impossible for you to understand what it was like. Every morning, I woke up terrified, literally terrified, that I was going to make a mistake, that I was going to miss something, that we weren't going to do something that could have saved more people's lives. And it was, but the way the community came together, I mean, everybody stood up that, that's not true. 80% stood up, 20% criticized, right? But the 80% who stood up, what we were able to accomplish, no other city did. I mean, and I'll never forget when we put up the tents, right? The tents are ready, we're ready to take patients, we got doctors, we got nurses. Everybody's flown in, but we got no oxygen. We, somebody forgot that in order to hook up the oxygen, you had to turn off the oxygen, and that would mean 142 people would die. Obviously, we didn't turn off the oxygen. But within 24 hours, you know, the city got together with NASA, they brought in a truck of liquid oxygen, and we were up and running in 24 hours. How incredible was that? And at the end of the day, you know, it was, it was the hand of God that was there that guided us through this. It, it, I mean, the, every battle we had to fight, we had to fight for the vaccine. We had to, I mean, little stuff you don't know about, you know? There's special freezers that reach 30 below that nobody had. There's special freezers that reach 30 below that nobody has. We, we had to get the hospital a freezer, remember? It was, we were so unprepared. But we, we seem to have handled every crisis as it came as best it could. I, I, I really had an incredible honor to be the mayor during that time. But I had incredible people all around me. And if we hadn't had the two of you, our decisions would have been so different. You know, because when you don't have real, when you don't have real people with real, with real knowledge behind them, what you do is you, you tend to grasp onto what the masses are saying. You know, what's the most popular thing on the internet at the moment, you know? But we didn't. We had real solid information from people who had been there. I mean, you had been to Africa during Ebola. You are an infectious disease guy and you know when you see what, and you also knew what you didn't know. You know? And that information was constantly being shared with us. It was some difficult times, but I think that we are a much, much better community than we were when it started. We certainly have a different attitude about working together than I think we've ever had. It, we just kind of fall in place and everybody does their part with whatever the project might be. And I think we, that was a gift that came from COVID. And then personally, when it was all over, what happens? I go to Bakersfield and get COVID. And you guys kept me alive. I mean, you know, I walked in with over 104 degree temperature. And when you're 70 years old, that's not a good place to be. But here I am. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Motion to adopt Resolution 23-21.
I'll second that motion.
Let's vote.
In its unanimous, we will forever be in your debt. So have you figured out how to drop the mortality rate by 30% yet?
Working on it.
You're working on it? All right, good. I mean, we can't just sit and rest on our laurels, we've got work to do, right?
I do, one, one point, well, as, as, just one element of that. We had a Fentanyl Town Hall and I think it was a really neat experience. Rod was on there, we had one of the sheriff's deputies. And it was a real good event. And I, I think the fact that Fentanyl is a major public health issue in California and in Lancaster, that we're going to, we're going to be working further down the road on more issues with that. And I'm going to bring in someone else from the hospital, Dr. Nicole Wytal, who is our champion for opiate use disorder. And we're going to be meeting with Rochelle and her team at the, at the farmer's market to distribute Narcan and, and keep going on that point. And that's one of many, many things obviously we could do to start saving lives, reduce some mortality.
Thank you. You know, we've become too compartmentalized as a community. And I think what you guys have done is break down those compartmentalizations. You know, I mean, who are we to go over and get involved in the hospital? I mean, we had no jurisdiction whatsoever. But we built a hospital in your parking lot. But I, I think when we start recognizing we're all in this together, things get a lot better. What? I know. Okay, thank you. The state of emergency is over. We now have to vote on everything. I can't just say it anymore. I'm going to miss the state of emergency. But I guess that's the way it is.
Motion to approve the consent calendar is currently comprised?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. All right. So we'll open the public hearing on item one. They got a script for me to read when we find it. And we will continue the public hearing.
So we are going to do the staff report and then we will ask you to have a motion to continue the public hearing, continue consideration of the resolution and introduce the ordinance. But I believe Shannon has a staff report for you.
They left that part out about the staff report.
Okay.
Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Chris, members of the city council, thank you for the opportunity to present the renewal of the downtown Lancaster P-bid tonight. In 2010, the Lancaster City Council embarked upon a bold vision for the renewal of downtown Lancaster. We invested $12.5 million in a complete streetscape transformation. And with this, we were able to attract over $135 million in private investment, hundreds of thousands of square feet of commercial, over 60 businesses and more than 800 permanent jobs. In order to continue this positive momentum, the city of Lancaster partnered with the Boulevard Association in order to establish the original property-based improvement district. This was the first bit of its kind in the community and it was overwhelmingly supported at the time. It has since continued to enjoy that positive support from both property owners and business owners in the downtown area. It was renewed in 2018 and tonight we have, the, the property owners have given us such a vote of confidence that we are looking to renew for a 10-year term. So this would extend through 2033 or 2032, sorry. Tonight is the next step in that process. On February 14th, you approved a resolution of intention to renew. Tonight, we will be introducing a new ordinance. There is currently a law or a pending bill that is circulating at the legislature, which we do believe will pass. And that will require P-bids to be enacted by ordinance. Previously, they were not. So we are going ahead and being proactive and doing it by ordinance this time so that we don't have to redo this process when that bill does pass. So tonight, we are asking that you introduce that ordinance. We would have then do the second reading of the ordinance at the next meeting on May 9th and tabulate the ballots at that time. So the, the official recommendation is to continue the public hearing to May 9th, 2023 at 5:00 PM. Continue consideration of the resolution establishing the DLP bid, approving the assessment formula and levying the assessments through a majority of the votes cast in the downtown Lancaster ballot process in favor of the formation of the P-bid to May 9th. And introduce the ordinance amending Chapter 14 of the Lancaster Municipal Code, renewing the DLP bid. If council approves, the second reading will take place on May 9th. And if the majority, if there is no majority protest, you will have the option to go ahead and renew that district. We do have some of our business owners, property owners here in attendance tonight. We have Art and Daniel from our Boulevard Board. Art is the current president and we are all happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So you just want us to continue it?
Yes. Introduce the ordinance and continue everything else.
Yes.
I'll introduce ordinance number 1102 and also make a motion to continue to May 9th.
And to be clear, continue the public hearing to May 9th at 5:00 PM.
Yes.
As so stated, I'll second that motion.
Let's vote. You pulled it off.
Passes unanimously.
All right. Wow, that was a quick meeting. Okay, council reports. What have you all been doing?
Well, I can speak from my end of SCAG. I know me and Ken now work together on a couple of boards. The Transportation Committee approved the funding for the five-county region. So Lancaster's project was approved and part of that approval was to receive $9.4 million for the construction of safe routes connecting schools and streets along the Fifth Street East path. So we got $10 million almost. So I'm excited about that. Free money.
And then this last Thursday, we learned that there's a opportunity for us and hopefully we seek some additional funds for hydrogen. And so we're going to, so.
Lots of money.
Lots of money. I think the cap was, there was no cap, was there not, Trellese? Because I, because I know the one, one side of it was 10 million.
There was, there was no cap if you were along an identified corridor, which SR14 is.
Is.
If you weren't, the cap was 15 million.
Yeah, okay.
So we have an unlimited cap because of our location.
So we're going to attempt, go ahead.
I didn't hear the question.
Do we have a commitment?
Well, the funding specifically is for electric and alternative energy fueling stations. So the goal is, and we're actually digging through the application and all of the information on the, their, the grant's website right now to figure out how do we put the app together to, to compete for it. But the goal would be to put in for a fueling station network in the city of Lancaster that they pay for. And this is federal money that comes out of the transportation bill that was signed into law, I think about a year ago.
And so I specifically asked the gentleman that works with the federal government if there was funds available for hydrogen besides electric. And he said yes.
Yes.
And I said, great. And we connected with who to seek those from a standpoint of making a, a grant request.
Good work.
Yeah, so I.
I'm wondering if we should try to work a deal with Santa Clarita so that we have a fueling station there. And it then makes hydrogen as, I mean, hydrogen fuel cells as a viable option for people in the Antelope Valley. But I, I don't think it, I'm not comfortable with it being viable until something's in Santa Clarita so people know they can get home, you know?
We can reach out to Santa Clarita and I understand they're.
Marsh is on that board with us, right?
Yes, that's correct. Marsh is on this, both, both sides. So.
Jason, we'll do it through the NCTC.
Okay, there you go.
I mean, if we can get them up and running at the same time, then people will buy, presumably, will buy hydrogen fuel cell cars. They're, they're a better bet than the, than the electric. All right, good. Thank you. Good work. Anybody else?
We've been meeting, both cities have been meeting in order to have a joint meeting. We will do that sometime in May. We will have a full agenda. So we've been meeting to discuss different options on that.
We're going to do it at the same place as last time?
Yes, same place. We'll do it at the college. The supervisor has already agreed to mediate to chair.
To chair, not mediate. Mediate implies there's a need.
That's why I used the word.
Raj, did you want to talk about Monday?
Yeah. We, ABC, so finally, it's not a small campus anymore. It's becoming a university. I mean, all the infrastructure. So we were able, Ken and I were able to attend a grand opening of student service. And it's a beautiful, beautiful building. And we were there and it's definitely, when I attended ABC, it wasn't, it's not the same ABC anymore.
That's what I hear.
Very.
Still longer tumbleweed tech.
Yeah, very impressive.
Okay, good. Thank you. Everybody good? City manager.
Yes, sir, a couple announcements, update on public safety. So as you know, we're working diligently, getting our hybrid law enforcement model up and running. We have had hired two, 10 new technicians, those are law enforcement technicians. And just to share with you what that, what that does is those folks will be out taking reports, handling some of the, the lesser crimes from a report-taking perspective and administrative perspective, freeing up the deputies' time for them to go on, on calls. So this should be immediately reduced response times, which as you know, and your feedback you've had from Rod, has been significantly challenging for us. Not only have, are they down a number of deputies, but the workload and the volume is, is pretty high. So we have, we're onboarding these folks now. They've been hired. They'll be trained by the law, by the sheriff's department and be out in the field very soon. So we're excited to have that transition. We'll be adding additional staff as we get the policies and procedures in place for additional officers as well as administrative staff as well. So we're looking forward to that moving, moving and having an immediate impact. We also have some real strong successes on the Flock cameras. I don't know if, if, John, you want to update them or not? Rod's not here today, he had a family emergency. So the, but maybe we can update you on that. The Flock cameras have turned up a number of wanted vehicles with success in solving a number of different crimes. I don't know if you want to add to that.
Mayor, we, the Flock system, we don't, I don't have the numbers with me today. We've been reporting to Rod. But the stolen vehicle effect has started, we're starting to see reductions in the overall stolen vehicle numbers. We've made significant number of arrests of folks driving those. We've also been publicizing the fact that we're doing it so that we have that deterrent effect. We also opened up the investigative side of the camera system to the station investigators, our homicide investigators and the gang investigators. And they've been able to make cases more rapidly just tracing down vehicle information. And those are actually having quicker turnaround on developing the criminal cases and tracking down suspects.
Are we using AI to do the, the regressions on what the camera sees? Are we able to do that?
There is a function in the system for identifying vehicles through vehicle description. But what ends up happening, that eventually takes you back to the license plate, which is the identifying information. So if we had a, if we had just a time and a random vehicle description, we could search the database that exists for vehicle.
There ought to be a way that it just alerts us that this particular license plate has been in the vicinity of these particular crimes.
That's exactly what happens is if, if the license plate is entered into the system, into the state stolen vehicle system and wanted vehicle system, we get alerts. Not all, but almost all of the patrol personnel, all the special teams and all the investigators have been trained on the system, they have access to it, they can run it on their phone, they can run it on the computer in the car, they run it in their offices. So if they're doing something and an alert comes up that's nearby, they'll go out in the field and see if they can chase it down. So it does automatically alert to those. I wish I had a number for me, we didn't pull them for this week, but we've had thousands of hits on vehicles, not just stoners, but vehicles that had wants attached to them. And there, there are wants that are issued by the court, so they're anywhere from infractions to felonies.
So are we still? We'll get there, we'll get there. So are we still deploying these?
Yeah, well, we have the first batch deployed based on the successes we have. I think we'll be deploying more and then working with the private sector to deploy on private property. So the same cameras can exist in a Walmart parking lot. We're working with the Destination Lancaster with Ken on the hotels side. So we can actually place these on private property, they work through a cellphone, so they can be anywhere. And then of course, backing that up with the marketing side of it, making sure people understand that we're watching. We've had some really successes on some other cameras we've installed. As you guys know, you funded other cameras besides these Flock that are in parks and things like that. And we've caught a number of different graffiti, graffiti taggers. And one of the largest ones, I think it was $40,000 worth of, of damage, one we caught on the camera. So we're aggressively adding these tools out there and technologies out there.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much.
How did you guys, how did you guys prioritize where to put the cameras? Was it through Ivy and Watson or just from your known databases of where high crime was or stolen cars? I'm just curious.
We, we actually worked with the representatives from Flock. For the, for the Flock cameras, we worked with their analysts and our analysts. We had, we started with two, two different approaches to it. But they're currently prioritized by what we know to be well-traveled locations.
I guess it's not a secret, is it? Okay, good, thank you. So, okay, now. This really is quite innovative and revolutionary in many respects. I'm really proud of the fact that we're on top of this.
And there'll be more to come. Just, we're busy at Parks as well, so I'll announce Parks, the Bunny Hop, which was our Easter event to replace the Easter egg hunt with a much grander scale. With that, we have a short little video to show you. It was an unbelievable success and a shout out to the Parks team and Sonya for the efforts they put in out there. And a shout out to the Parks team and Sonya for the efforts they put in out there.
This is our first time at this event. We traveled from Illinois. We heard, we looked online and saw that there was this great event for Easter, and so we thought we'd check it out. It's great, wonderful memories. You know, at his age, like, he's got so much enthusiasm for everything. And so this is really awesome that it's got the super event with the egg hunting, the, the inflatables. I mean, these are memories that he's really gonna remember.
It's just a little bit different from last year, but we're really excited. It's a great turnout. And as you can see, the people are loving it. We have a DJ out there. Everyone's having a great time. So we're really excited about the change.
And of course, that doesn't end there. We've got the Boulevard Market coming back this Thursday from four to nine PM. That's the farmer's market on the Boulevard, so come join us out there. The 30th Annual Poppy Festival begins April 21st through the 23rd. We got Concert of Matt Stell, Frankie J., and This Was It. It's a Michael Jackson tribute band. I will be at that one. I know Marvin will too. He's always.
Laughing at you.
And of course, the Lancaster Community Center is getting well-used and the operation's great. Some good 22, or 2022 stats on our graffiti numbers. 511,000 square feet of graffiti was, was removed. That's 8.8 football fields of graffiti was removed last year by our staff. So I know we've heard feedback about graffiti and the challenges we face, but let us, let you know, our, our staff is out there painting a heck of a lot of graffiti. With the assistance of Public Safety and the Graffiti Tracker Program, we're gonna start catching some of these guys on a much more frequent basis, hopefully having an impact on the outcomes of that. And what's even cooler is the tons of illegal dump picked up by this, by the crew, by the tide crew, is 1,813 tons of illegal dumped garbage. That's the equivalent of 13,000 African elephants picked up in a year. So if you can understand the magnitude of what they're doing out there, we may not see it every day. We don't drive by them every day doing it. We just notice that trash isn't there or it was never there. But these guys are out there busting their butts for us and doing a great job on it. And then grand openings, Dutch Brothers opens March 31st, and the Sprouts, the Sprouts grand opening is April 28th at 6:30 in the morning. So I'll see you guys bright and early to buy some fresh fruit at Sprouts. That's it.
Thank you. City clerk?
This is a time to address the city council agency authority on non-agendized matters. Speaker cards can be found on the back table of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter may be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Sean.
Thank you. I missed the ED1 speaker card, but I just wanted to say again to thank you to our deputy mayors and the city council for your efforts. As a father who had an infant in the fourth quarter of 2020, it was very scary. When he was in the womb, it was very scary when he was born, but you guys gave us inspiration and hope. And I did just want to let everybody know about the outcome of the Facebook Town Hall that we did. We, at the council's direction, we had a, a strategy to meet people where they are about the COVID-19 pandemic for, to bring what the information that we were hearing in the public meetings to where disinformation was running rampant with the 20% Facebook. And we also went, it also was posted on Instagram. It was posted on Twitter. And when you add up all the clicks, when you add up all the engagements, hundreds of engagements, when you add up all the views, we reached nine, over 900, 9,700 people. And I believe that that also helped save lives. We talked about vaccines. We talked about the facts of the COVID case. And so it was an honor to be able to coordinate with you guys on such a small part of your effort, but I think that was really meaningful. And thank you so, so much. And we did vaccinations at the Welcome Back Lancaster Block Party and at Monday Night Bites. And it was just an honor to have that hope and to be a part of, a small part of that. So thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Which brings up a question. When should we get our vaccine renewed? I'm assuming we have to keep current on our vaccines.
The main series is two shots of Pfizer. You've had that, and then one more afterwards. So if you had three shots, you're, you're fully vaccinated of the Pfizer and the Moderna.
So I never have to do it again?
There depends on, you know, I don't think so. It looks like the COVID is going away, and I don't think we need. But we'll wait and see what the CDC has to say.
I think the CDC is reconsidering, but I, I think they're talking about it, but there's no recommendation yet.
Correct. So if you had three, you're fully vaccinated.
And if you had three and you got it anyway, you're really.
Serious immunity going on.
If you've had an infection after your three shots, then that's considered the fourth vaccine, right? Because when you're infected by a wild-type strain, that gives you four more, four to six more months of protection.
Hard to unlock it.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Is it Carolina?
Hello, my name is Carolina Velazquez. I'm a student at ABC, taking a political science. And being here today is part of a research paper I have to complete. I just want to say it's one of the first times I attend a meeting, and it's very eye-opening. And it was great to learn about everything you guys have presented so far. Dr. Tron, I met him because he's treating my son, but knowing everything you've done backstage, like, I admire you so much, and not only you, but everyone in the medical field, and I just want to say thank you for your service. But now, mayor, I have to ask you a question. And my question is, what is your greatest achievement outside of your mayorship?
I'm sorry, say that again?
What is your greatest achievement outside mayorship?
I married Carol McWilliams. And I have been married to her now for almost 40 years.
That's a blessing.
And that is the greatest accomplishment of my life.
Thank you.
No.
I'm, I'm assuming she'll say the same about you. So thank you for your answer, though.
But the lesson to it is, is that life is very difficult. Success is very difficult. You cannot do it alone. I had a partner every step of the way who didn't hesitate to kick me in the ass. I mean, the, didn't hesitate to kick me when she thought I wasn't working hard enough, but was my greatest fan. She, she never missed an opportunity to say good things about me in public. She never said terrible things about me in public. That was always not true privately. But, but I, I think that the amount of attention you pay to who you ultimately marry is incredibly important, you know? And when the two of us came together, life got really easy, and it was terribly difficult before that happened.
That's true.
That's probably not the answer you wanted.
No, it actually is, because I think communication is key, and it's, it relates in any kind of relationship. And what you've described is like, you always had the communication with her. Maybe she wasn't the same behind the scenes, but for a theory, you know, she was there to communicate and, you know, support you and move forward. And that's where you're, where you're at right now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Professor Ameka? I can never pronounce your name, and I'm sorry.
It's okay.
But I appreciate you sending your signatures.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, members of the Lancaster City Council, mayor, vice chair, and council members. On January 30th, I went to 24 Hour Fitness to swim. And when I was entering the parking lot, a man was shouting at me, "Don't hit my car, don't hit my car." I said I wasn't gonna hit your car, so eventually I saw an opening. I parked my car. The man said, "I hit him, I hit him." He saw two men. He said that his friends and the sheriff department, they came. And while they were talking with him, I went to swim. While I was swimming, he came in with a sheriff, and the sheriff, and pointed at me. The sheriff said, "Can I talk to you?" I said, "Yes." He said that I'm, I am under investigation for hit and run. I said, "You can charge me for hit and run because my car is parked in the 24-hour fitness. I'm still in the 24-hour fitness. It's not in the freeway." He said, "He's gonna charge me anywhere." I said, "Okay, thank you." Then I came out. I didn't see any paper. I didn't see, I drove to the sheriff department, trying to get the paper for the citation I was. She was called, and I was told that it is his, she said, and that I should go. The insurance will take care of it. I went home. The next day, insurance started investigating it, and find that I didn't hit the car. Now I got a letter two days ago from the sheriff department threatening to sue me for Ms. Domino for the torture of this tenant. And since then, my brokerage has been running up and down. I didn't do nothing. The case has been referred to the insurance, and they handled the case. So I don't know why I should be threatening with a lawsuit on the same issue. So that's why I said, I'm not gonna sit and die.
They wouldn't be threatening you with a lawsuit. They might be threatening you with prosecution.
Okay, I'll say slip of tongue then, yeah, so.
But you know, you have a good point. I mean, the car was still there. You didn't leave the premises.
So I still have the letter.
Could you help with the, the captain?
Honorable mayor, hold on. Let me read what the paper said before my time is over. Please contact the Lancaster Sheriff Investigator Dictative Melo at this number to prevent additional information to help us clear up this matter. If this matter is not cleared, a charge of Ms. Domino or felon hit and run may be tried against you.
Okay. Your captain is here. The captain is gonna help you, and we'll deal with this.
Thank you, sir.
But I thought you got a great point. I mean, that's a great defense.
Thank you, sir. And I want to thank you guys for helping my students. They come here.
What the heck, you were in the pool.
Yes. I thank you guys, and.
Okay. Is it Ederson? Praza, right? And you're, you know, your, your professor's watching you, so make the question good.
It's more of a thank you you could say. Hello, good evening, guys. My name is Ederson Praza.
You gotta talk louder because I'm deaf.
So I moved here about four years ago, and it was right as soon as COVID hit. And my father lost his job, and it was a family of seven in one house, right? And at that time, my grandma was there and also my baby sister. And during that time, I didn't realize you guys were like helping this much, but it was really accessible to access vaccines, testing, and such things as food, because we're very low on money. And I thank you guys, what you guys have done for the community, because of course, we're not the only family that struggle like this. So I thank you, and thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. So we, Saul Jesse Duñez. Wait. You know, Du, Duolingo has limitations. I've been doing Duolingo now for a year and a half.
Thank you. Is it, is it on? Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, yes.
Hi, I'm Saul Jesse Duñez. I am a political science student at ABC. I'm under Professor Ameka Don. One of my assignments was to do a research paper and come here and ask you guys a question. So my question to you guys is about COVID, all right? What are you guys doing differently, and what are you guys preparing for if another pandemic hits? Are there gonna be the same situation? Is it gonna be a rough start in the beginning and then succeed in the end? Or did you guys already prepare ahead of time?
Sean, you wanna talk about the report?
So at the direction of the mayor and the city council, we put together a playbook from what we've learned and also how to prepare. So the playbook itself has four phases, right? The first phase is when the virus is at a different continent, let's say, in Africa. So what do we do at that time when, during that first phase? And the second phase is when it has left that continent and has reached the United States. That's phase two. What are we supposed to do at that time? Third phase is when it's here in LA, in, in, in Antelope Valley, and what we have to do at that time. And the fourth phase is when we've been through the, the disease process, and what's the next steps. So it's a very, it's about a 14-page document that we, that we've submitted. And we've actually opened it up when monkeypox, when that came out after COVID. So we went back to what each services would be doing. So this is what public safety would be doing. This is what media would be doing. This is what the, the city manager would be doing. This is what the hospital would be doing. So it's a very complete, comprehensive document that we could share with you.
Okay, thank you. Oh, please, go ahead, sir.
I was gonna add, so yeah, with something like this happened, having a good after-action's report is really important to lessons learned. And I think that's what we try to put into that document. I do want to take the opportunity, since you brought it up, is to recognize two people who were, worked with all of us, which is Tiffany Tanner, who's not here today because of a personal health issue, and, and Maria Altamorano is here. And she is a nurse, a critical care nurse, and is getting an advanced master's degree, and who really did an outstanding job. And really, Maria is sort of representative of the people who worked in critical care during the pandemic, all the nurses and the doctors and other staff who really took the brunt, I believe, of, of the hospital-level care. And, and, and really, the two hospitals who stood up and the leaders of those hospitals, the CEOs and, and the other chief officers. So thank you, Maria. And I have one for you.
Stand it off. Thank you very much for everything you guys have done. Also, like Ederson, I didn't know that you guys put that much work in the beyond, you know, in the background. Initially, I was like, okay, you know, councilmen and everyone else, they have their own stuff. And then, you know, we kind of fend for ourselves, but learning through political science and everything else, I'm finding to see that, you know, you guys actually do help us. So thank you.
Thank you. Maria, and, you know, I, they give me a script to follow, and I was remiss in not calling some attention to you because you, you were a huge help. And more importantly, you know, we forget, every day they went to work, they were looking at the possibility of dying. We forget that. Yes. You know, we, we look at the world now post-vaccine. This was pre-vaccine, and people were dying all around them. And they still went to work every day. It, you know, the, the, the level of, the level of, what's that word? Heroism, heroism that was shown by so many people was, was, you know, left me speechless at times. And, and I want you to know that that hasn't gone, it's not forgotten. It's just, it's just impossible to recognize, you know, because it was so awesome. It was so... Anyway, enough, I guess.
Mr. Mayor, I'm told by the communications group that we did not get a picture with you and the deputy mayors or Maria Altamorano, and they would very much like that photo. So if this is.
Can we do it after we're done?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. So, wait a minute, I'm getting these mixed up again. So you're sitting there watching me do this laughing, aren't you? He is, isn't he? Is it Ed Morsia? You're being watched. You better have a good question.
Hi, my name's Edu, and I'm part of the, I'm, I'm going to ABC right now. I'm with Professor Ameka Don. I'm part of the political science group, and I would like to thank you guys. I would, I would like to thank you guys for like, for your cooperation. For example, like, I got hit by COVID during like, January. And it's been really tough for me, because I have family members in my house who are, you know, older. And supposedly, you know, when they're older, they get sick, and they're like, they're more vulnerable for the virus.
That's true, that's what happens.
Yeah. And I really try to like, stay away from them. And then back in March, when the whole pandemic started, I was in Florida in a wedding. And then at first, I was like, yeah, no school. I was hell happy. But then once we came back, like, to Zoom, it was kind of like depressing, I guess. It wasn't just boring. And thanks to you guys, we came back, you know, it went back to normal, but slowly. And I'd like to thank the doctors and, you know, and all you guys for cooperating and helping us as a community. And, you know, to help us, and, you know, and, you know, if the next pandemic happens, you know, like they said, like they answered, we can get ready for the pandemic, you know, and, you know, and help each other out and everything. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, the question was, what would we do different, I think? You know, I, I think we would be a lot more proactive in enforcing just elementary things. You know, patient zero hit Seattle on January 20th, and it was around then, we were cautioning churches and different people, stop shaking hands, stop hugging, stop, you know, stop having, and, you know, the reaction was not positive. And it caused us to question, at least it caused me to question what I was saying. I kept saying it, but it, there was a lot of doubt. There would not be any doubt this time, zero. You know, the, the first sign of a pandemic, it's gonna be, we're gonna have a state of emergency, and we're going to enforce it, and we're not gonna care what the county or anybody else has to say about it. We could have saved a lot more lives, you know, than we did. I mean, I'm proud of what we did, but we, it's not that we could have done better, if the surrounding communities had, had joined us and enforced the masks, we would have been much more successful, don't you think? You know, the, the problem with being in LA County is you're, you're really not isolated. Had we been isolated, this would have been a much more positive experience. Alfonso? Oh, the other thing too, is it was a dress rehearsal, make no mistake about it. COVID was a dress rehearsal for what's coming. If this had been MERS, with 30% mortality rate, we wouldn't have recovered, you know? I hope we, I hope the world learned its lesson from COVID, as to what to do when the next one comes, because it is coming. Wouldn't you agree?
There, there's a lot more viruses out there, there's a lot more risks, there's a report now that Marburg virus is appearing also in Africa, and there's an alert that we, we should be, also be ready.
How's it transmitted?
Droplets, and so if we enforce mask and hand washing and gloves and six feet, we're...
Meningitis can be caught by people coughing and breathing it?
Yes, yes. Here we go, right?
That is a terrible thing. I mean, you bleed from every, every part of your body, you don't?
Correct, it's a hemorrhagic fever, that's what it is. Ebola was a hemorrhagic fever.
Hi, hello, council. First thing I'd like to say is, thank you for what you have done during the pandemic. I appreciated all the, all the movements and strides that you've made, and to get us to the point we are now. I appreciated the, the 10K vax challenge that you guys have done. Yeah, I was actually one of the winners of that challenge.
Really?
Yeah, so.
How much did you win?
I got 50 bucks.
50 bucks? We were awfully cheap.
Okay, so, I'm with Amica Don as well, I'm her student. So I saw the video of the Tesla solar panels being put up on the houses, and so I have a question about that.
I'm sorry, say it again.
The Tesla solar panels?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, my question is, how would they be disposed of on expiration? And if not, if not disposing, would they be recycled and reused again?
You know, I, that's a pressing question, as to what they do with the solar panels at the end of their, their lifespan, and I wish I had an answer to that. I can tell you, the Tesla program that we're doing, they're guaranteed for, what, 20 years? Anything goes wrong, they'll come in and replace them. The, but at, I mean, the, when they say that has a shelf life of 20 years, somebody just made that up, you know, we really don't know how long they're gonna last. But they do come to an end at some point, and I don't, I don't know the answer to that. Do you have an answer?
No, there's been a lot of speculation and talk, and industries being formed for that purpose, about what they do with the end of life of a lot of these facilities, because you can lay out in the desert, and we've got acres and acres and square miles of solar panels that eventually will be obsolete. And what we do with them, there'll be some smart recycling company, I'm sure, someday, who identifies a way to make a ton of money on it, I'm sure.
Probably, but you know, there, most of what's out there now is third-generation panels, you know, fifth-generation panels will probably be this big, you know? So that day will come, but right now, the, the great thing about this program is it no out-of-pocket cost to the homeowner. Your electric bill is gonna go down, it'd be less than you're paying now, and it's locked in. You don't have to worry about these spikes, you know, where all of a sudden, you get an electric bill that you can't afford to pay. It, it's, it's one of the best programs I've seen, that, that people ought to take advantage of, you know, because we pay for it all. Now, we get paid back, comes through what would be the electric bill, but a cheaper electric bill. Good? Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it did. Thank you very much.
Now, did I call Alfonso?
No.
Okay, Alfonso?
That was Alfonso.
Yeah, I thought it was, so. Marco Salvaras? Oh, Marco, how are you?
We sat down about an hour ago, and the subject matter that we discussed, first of all, I wanna say thanks for allowing us to sit down and have that discussion, to Mr. Doris, yourself, and others who were attending, including the city manager. Over the years, people from other countries leave their country to live a better life. And the projection, and how they're viewed, sometimes are embraced, and sometimes they're not. But what is clear is immigrants create communities. Immigrants create jobs, they stimulate the economy, they're taxpayers, and many of them are taxpayers that don't get tax back in return. So I will be brief in saying to you, thank you for sitting down with us, to the issue of vendors, not just in Palmdale, but in particular, here in Lancaster. And we're able to sit down and, and talk issues that we can work together in partnership to continue to comply when it comes to licenses and, and permits. So I just wanna thank you for, for listening, on behalf of SALVA, the nonprofit in Lancaster, and, and to corroborate and come up with plans, that we can continue to work together, and, in light of safety for all, and, and brick and mortar, and so, because, at the end of the day, vendors, not just here in Lancaster, not in Nellie County, not in California, but nationwide, continue to grow. So, with that said, we can, we look forward, and we're excited to, to come up with plans, and how we see fit in working together in whatever area, and business it may be, that we can support and comply with, with vendors now, and vendors in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I enjoyed our meeting, by the way. We should have done it a long time ago. My fault. Victor, how are you? Good, come on down.
Well, good afternoon, everyone.
There you go.
Adjustable.
Yes.
All right, okay, good afternoon again, everyone. I wanna say thank you to the street maintenance people for fixing the sidewalks in quite a few areas that I couldn't get over, because of the lifting and so forth and so on. I wanna say thank you to the graffiti removal folks, for all their help, really fast. Right along the cemetery over here, there was a bunch of graffiti, they were done, the next day, it was done. You know, so they're really good, I, I really like that program going on, as far as that goes. I think what we should do, as far as parking enforcement goes, we got lots of problems and not enough, parking enforcement personnel, you might say. They should all work together, the street cleaning guys should go and have a camera that takes a picture of the license plate being there, maybe hook up a laser beam to disintegrate it, turn it into ashes, and sweep it as it goes along, you know? Anything, I'm just coming up with whatever we can do, you know? That would be a good idea.
And I just wanted to cut off their thumbs.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 I take, take out their eyes, so they can't see the wall they're gonna paint on. But anyway.
Hey, Victor, I wanna tell you, I, I, they distributed your voice message you left with the city. You made my day, when they, they sent it to me, I, I can't tell you how tired we get of people just criticizing, criticizing, criticizing.
I go up and down with that.
But for you to, that, that voice message you left was, like, maybe it was just the day.
Well, it's.
But it improved, it improved my day tremendously.
Well, you know, I had, I had one bad thing, a sheriff told me, "Well, you can only make one phone call a day to us, about violations." No, 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 I called the watch commander, and I mean, I left a bad message, I think, but watch commander called me back and said, "No, that was just a mistake," and everything. So I appreciate all that, but things are starting to get better. Deputy Groupie here, he went around with me today, I showed him some, pointed out some things where people are parking across the sidewalks, leaving trailers and everything, so hopefully, parking enforcement, when they're driving down the roads, doing their thing, they can see the vehicles parked across the sidewalks, and do something about it, so I don't have to call them and tell them about it. That's all I'm asking, maybe everybody get together and, you know, help each other in some way, shape, or form, so we can get this all cleaned up.
I like it, thank you.
Okay? Thank you, everyone.
Oscar. Say it again.
Ayraeta, or iraeta, whatever you want to. Yes, I have the same problem every time. So, good evening, everybody. I'm being here part of SALVA, and I want to say thank you for open the doors to have the meetings. This guy told us about the issues in, in Pandale, but we see the issues, the street vendors in Lancaster too. And I want to say thank you for open the doors, for working as a nonprofit, as SALVA here in Lancaster, and open the door for our community, Hispanic community too, and I want to say thank you for that one, and our goal is just continue to working together with the city. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. David Paul.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, good evening. That laser beam has got me all worked up, I have my laser beam here, and I'm trying to figure out how to make it be a disintegrating ray, solve a lot of problems. Mayor, I tell you what, this was a good meeting, I really enjoyed being here, and I thank you and all the city staff, and the doctors, and everyone else that helped us through the COVID. Those were some tough times, we didn't know what was gonna happen, and I'm very proud of everybody's effort in this city. Appreciate that greatly. Dr. Stock, you mentioned the fentanyl town hall you ran online, and that was very eye-opening. And, you know, I go around to a lot of meetings, and I always ask the parks people or the rangers at the door, what do they know about how to administer the Narcan and the fentanyl overdose? And I think that's a place where we should up our game a little bit, and have fentanyl or Narcan on, on hand to help, because someone falls over, they're not breathing, I mean, it's a pretty good indicator that that might be the problem, so, but, Mayor, I tell you what, I was delighted tonight, because when that young woman came up, did the trial thing, and then you have the COVID stuff, I mean, you, you were delighted tonight, and I really liked seeing you happy like that, so, thank you for that. We, we need more joy around here, and I always love what the city does, and I'm just proud to be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather. Call that Heather.
Which one? Is there another Heather?
It's you.
Okay, that's what I thought. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Actually, I'm here to ask how I give kudos to the Sergeant DeVille at the Police Department, because lately, I've had like, well, not only myself, but my neighbors too, have had an issue with some people that don't like to follow the law, and they're riding a mini-bike up and down the street, at like, 40 miles an hour with no helmet, and other issues like painting on the wall, which the graffiti department, wherever they are, I don't know if there's anyone here, but they have done a great job, definitely. But Sergeant DeVille deserves to have a kudos, but I know he takes them for the deputies that came out and take, took the report on the initial night, but how do you give the sergeant the kudos? You know, like a commemorative, whatever it's called, you know, a star on his, on his file, or whatever, that he did a good job. I mean, how do I do that?
I'm having trouble understanding.
Okay, so, when you have two police officers come out, and they do an excellent job, you can call the Sheriff's Department, and give them a compliment, and then it goes like, a star on their, you know, personal file? How do you do that for the sergeant that you give the report to? Because he's been very helpful to me, as far as like, you know?
See, letters get in their files.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I have to write a letter to the Police Department, then?
Yeah.
Okay, because I got one from them, thanking me for the one, you know, the compliments on the two deputies that came out, but I didn't know, oh, sorry. I didn't know how, if he's taking the report, can I just tell him he deserves one too? Because he has been very helpful.
But if you actually write a letter?
Well, I could, yeah.
I mean, when, you know, when they're up for, for promotions and stuff like that, they go through their file, and they start seeing letters that are positive.
Right.
Instead of negative.
I think that's a good thing to do for them, because I don't know how many.
Right?
Oh.
What?
He's not Sergeant DeVille. I don't know what Sergeant DeVille looks like, but he was so helpful, and since this is an ongoing thing with, I guess, sawsaws, and stealing catalytic converters, and graffitiing the wall, and this group is just like, I yell at them and tell them how stupid they are, but, you know, I'm sure that they don't like that, but, you know, I want them to know there's always someone watching. And Sergeant DeVille has advised me what I can and cannot do, and, you know, what I should do, and, because it's always late at night, so. These people, I don't know why they're as cold as it is, I can't wait till summer, they're gonna be out there all the time, but anyway, thank you, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
You know, I wonder how much safer we would be if people, you know, prioritized when they complained? You know, I mean, if it's not gonna hurt anybody, let's not call it in, and have a deputy have to come out and do a report. I mean, you know, because every time we do that, we're taking somebody off the street, and we're undermanned.
Well, actually, I had some tools stolen, that's when they came out, and it was like, downpour, I couldn't believe it came.
You just made me think of it, Heather, you know?
Well, I don't know what else to do to get these people to stop shooting fireworks at two and three in the morning, I mean, I don't know.
A lot of things just don't have a solution. All right, so, that's the end of the speaker cards. Any comments from the council? Good. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May 9th, 2023, at 5:00 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Carol, my day is done, and I'm coming home right after I eat lunch.